All right, good morning, everyone. Welcome to our Wednesday, January the fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Public hearing for Supreme Press Police Jury. Proposed budget. Mr. Bill, could we have the roll call, please?
Uh, Mr. Stevens.
Here.
Don't we have to have a roll caller?
No, not really.
All right, well, listen. We all know. So why would I? I'm grabbing my pen here. All right, I'm sorry about that.
It's all right.
Uh, public discussion of Supreme Press Police Jury's proposed budget for the calendar year ending December the thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. There any public discussion on the budget? Nothing? All right, with that said, will be no comment. Item three, be closed, public hearing.
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Got a second, I mean.
Ain't that have no comment, no question.
Ruffin, and who's that Bo? All right, item four, adjourn public hearing.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Bye.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I'll read it there, Bo.
Bison in here, what you?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
That's what we had to be here at eight-thirty for? In case somebody wanted to say something.
On the record.
On the record.
On the record.
Could've said something, Bo.
Come on, Bo, you've got to come up with something.
I'm usually not sure of the words, y'all know that.
You sleeping this morning. So now we gotta wait till nine?
Nope. Oh, we're gonna open up the other meeting immediately following the public hearing.
There you go, let's roll this.
Bird said he's got the roll today.
I don't want to go back to the fireplace.
Bird ain't got no electricity, he might want to stay up here.
He ain't got no electricity, no water in it.
You want to call the water man?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, good morning, welcome to our Wednesday, January the fifteenth. Police Jury Monthly Meeting. Mr. Bill, could we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Stewart.
Here.
Mr. Stevens.
Here.
Mr. Ruffin.
Here.
Mr. Bison.
Here.
Mr. Taylor.
Here.
Mr. Garcia.
Here.
Mr. Fobino.
Here.
Mr. Emidi.
Here.
Mr. Bird.
Here.
The President, all members of the jury are present, we have four.
Thank you, Mr. Ruffin. Mr. Ruffin, would you lead us in a prayer? And, uh, Bison in pledge.
Let us pray. Gracious Father, we thank you for this day and the building to the common service constituents of this parish. We pray that the things that we do will be pleasing in your sight. Bless this body as we go about doing the work of our constituents. We pray a special blessing on our national, state, and local government. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we need to amend the agenda, do we have any amendments?
No amendments.
No amendments.
I make a motion to amend the agenda, though.
My second. Got a motion by Ruffin. Second, who's that? Bruce. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item seven, public comments. Allow the period of public comments for any item on the agenda. Public comments moving on. Item eight, the election of the Police Jury President. Over open floor for nomination for President of the Police Jury.
I'd like to nominate, uh, the present President, uh, Kim Walz, but he has agreed to stay on and serve. And I would like to put his name in the nomination for President.
Make a motion, nomination proposed.
It'd be Bison, Lewis.
You got a board on the way to propose that, huh? Get Eric.
All right, do I have a motion?
He's second.
All right, all in favor? All opposed?
I'm not ready to tell.
Thank you.
You done it again.
Thank you, guys.
Say, Mr. Burke?
Morning, morning, morning. All right, election of Vice President.
I nominate Mr. Bird.
I second that.
I nominate Mr. William to stay one more year like we've been doing in the past, or two-year term.
That's second. I got Bo nominates Mr. Bear.
I'm all right with you.
And that was, uh, second, I'm Bruce. And then I got a nomination for Mr. Ruffin.
And with that being said, I didn't know y'all was usually carrying them two years at a time. I thought y'all changed them every year, I didn't know.
Well, we, the election is every year, but it's usually.
Right.
Let me point this out. One year.
You get.
Doesn't give us an individual time.
I agree.
A new person coming on, he's sitting there one year, now, he doesn't have time to get all, learn the process, but. That's basically what that is.
I got a. That was a Mr. Ruffin, who was, who nominated? Bison? All right, Bill, have him.
I don't have a second yet.
I'll share the second on that one. We have a vote, then. Do a voice vote? Or?
Mr. Stevens. Can I say something? Nothing against Barry, but with me not realizing how y'all did it, I'm good with.
I've never been, I've never had that explained either, so I didn't realize. How did you realize that, y'all?
Let me point something else out about the jury, too. And the election of officers, uh, the President and Vice President. There is an unwritten rule that, uh, we go around the table and people that have not served, you know, it's a, it's a, a pattern. The, the next person up would be the one that has not served or. No one wants to serve. Now, I can tell you around this table, there are a number of people here that choose not to serve as President. So, yeah, that was.
All Vice.
All Vice.
Some people don't realize how much time y'all put in up here.
Well, that's right, that's right, you got.
That's why I was like, give him a break. I really would. Mr. Ruffin said in the past, usually, your Vice, when they, when that two year is up, the Vice just steps up to the President.
It's automatic.
So he's had two years.
Under the President.
Or knowing what to do, or line in, or carrying on, and then he steps on in and he's, you know, kind of got your feet wet, I guess you say.
Right, yeah, uh, I would like to withdraw my name from this. Totally unexpected, Mr. Ruffin. Totally unexpected.
I, I, I won't go into it anymore, to be honest. I'm just gonna leave it like it is.
That's why I know what I did.
I'm gonna leave it like it is.
Congratulations. I already did. I had a motion by Bison and a second by Eric, all in favor of Mr. Ruffin serving, uh, as Vice. All opposed? Congratulations.
Let me, let me point something else that I'm, I'm very much aware of, and has been through the years. It is a convenience. And I know that the jury doesn't use me to have someone local. Can you run by here, can you run by here and sign this, can you run by and sign it? If you don't, if, and I just happen to live right here in Manny. Barry? If they had to call you to come by and run by and sign a check, uh, uh, need your signature on something, that would get old. Would you come from down there? And, 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 that, that's part of the reason I stopped thinking. And I know I've been, I've served Vice President, I've been on the, uh, Finance Committee for years. It's convenience. I'm looking, and I tried to make the meetings when I, I'm, so far I've been able to make them. But, uh, I do understand that. And when anybody else wants to, if anybody else wants to serve Vice President of Finance Committee, we welcome you.
In saying, in saying that, I know from time to time, I'm in the north end of the parish and, you know, Mr. Bill and Ally, we have something comes through that needs to be signed. And I'm not available within, I know I could always call him and he's signed, or, or Mr. Bison's on finance with us. He could run by, and he sure helps a lot where I don't want to come from Converse down here to sign. And sometime, the time you even get back to Converse, well, I had a few more you needed to sign, so we'll call him.
And he's here in Manny, too, by the way.
Right.
Uh, it's not a coincidence that he serves, he's calling about, I hope they'll call him even more so than they called me.
They do.
Yeah, I'm glad.
And I don't mind, I don't care, I'm.
But it's good. And I think everybody need to understand the workings of the jury. That's, that's why I was trying to go through that with you. As you point out, some of them weren't even aware that.
That's right. I, I think, and I'm sure both say it, you got double stick walking sticks, and that's what we're trying to.
Oh, yeah, and just in case I need, you sit right there by, right by.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to item ten, is to appoint Police Jury Committees. Uh, on, on your, uh, worksheet, you should see a list of them. There was a few changes. Take my permit?
Third all is on here, and give us that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Last minute. Thank you, ma'am. Like I said, there was a few changes there, uh. Kind of let different ones move to another committee, this committee kind of get a taste of, uh, what we actually, a lot of these committees do. So.
I make a motion, we accept this.
Got a motion by Bo.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ruffin. I like that committee. First, are any discussion on these? No discussion, I had a motion by Bo, second by Ruffin, all in favor? Uh, all opposed?
Oh, I'm sorry, I said I too late.
You four?
I'm four.
All right.
What is the Pine Belt? I really don't even understand that.
The Community Action Agency. Uh, what Pine Belt is? The home office is in Jonesburg. We have, um, or we did have nine parishes that we cover. Uh, Pine Belt provides, uh, assistance of the, the food program over here that, uh, that does that, and done a real good job with that.
That's what we're told.
Yes.
Okay.
Y'all have a committee meeting every two weeks.
Well, yeah, we, I. You have when I call it. But, yeah, Pine Belt is, uh.
In saying that, before we move on to the next item, I want to thank all our committee members in whatever committee you were in for your time and your dedication to past year. I know, uh, field committees spent a lot of time up here. Uh, and as I said before, that's where your work stands in committee. Uh, but I appreciate each and every one of y'all who attended the meetings, the workshops, uh. Thank y'all. All right, moving on to item eleven, Mr., uh, Senator Allen Seabog, is anyone here from his office? At Mr. Shamahorn's office? Mr. Bagley's office? Planning Commission. Last month, we had appointed a, uh, Planning Commission. And we had, uh, selected our five members. One of them has, you, you, you got a letter in your package, and one of, uh, one that we appointed had, uh, has resigned. Uh, so we need to. So we need to, to think about, uh, nominating a fifth person where this committee can, uh, get started, you start, uh, gathering their information. I know we have some projects probably that's on hold because we need a Planning Commission in place. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, and, and we, we have a meeting yesterday with, um, this other parish, we're gonna next Friday, and we just kind of, we, we got some inside, a good conversation, so we're gonna, uh, get started with them next Friday.
Okay.
For the Planning Commission, the those people that we named. Yeah, we need those people to be active on there so that they know what to do.
Uh, just in conversation, I had reached out to her, I may get, uh, Ms. Ally to reach out to, uh, the lady over here at the Health Department, Chris, uh, Coleman, to see if she would be interested in serving on that board. And then if any of you guys have any one that y'all think, you know, would.
Do we need to appoint another chairman, or would that group pick their own chairman?
They will.
They would just pick their chair.
But we would have.
He can do it, he'd be, he'd be good.
Chris would, too, though. I mean, I don't think we can do it.
Well, he's.
I know he's busy.
He's had a interest in it because he's a developer.
Okay. So we can't do that?
Right, it has to be someone that's not.
Let me remind you once again, you can't be too selective about these, with these volunteer positions, boy, I tell you, it's hard to fill these slots. So when you find, if you got somebody that may want to serve, bring those people to us, because we need those.
None of us can serve on that. Right, okay, well?
No, no, not a.
None of us can.
No, not on the Planning Commission.
But, Planning Commission, if I may, we're very important, I consider. You know, every new subdivision, things like that, they got to approve all that, I don't think.
She was to her attention.
They have to.
Chamber of Commerce.
Like, no.
Because of this control. I'm not going to let that add on the Plan Commission.
The only thing is to get a developer on there, then to get a conflict.
Right, right, yeah.
And I will tell you that many, many years ago, Mr. Joe Palmer was on the parish survey. And he was on there, and he refused himself, when it was a subdivision that he had surveyed. And that was maybe still down. He said you couldn't, you couldn't even be there, so.
I don't figure you will have us look for Chris, but you won't.
Well, we'll let the four members that we have appointed, we'll let y'all reach out, see if y'all can find y'all fifth person for that committee. That's okay.
What about, what about Henry, you want that job, Henry?
I was looking at the lady from the Chamber of Commerce over here, she might be interested.
Unfortunately, Mary's a developer.
Okay, well.
Yeah.
Don't get in the way.
I don't think so, sorry.
You said, unfortunately.
What is your question?
Ally, you don't reach out to her and see. She may, may not. Uh, but anyway, we'll leave it up to that committee to, uh, make that decision, and they would come back here to do the, we would have to reappoint that one later. All right, y'all can handle that. At item fifteen, except the minutes of the previous regular meeting held December the eighteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Make that motion.
Second. Got a motion by Bo, who is second? Mr. Emidi's. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Item sixteen is Judge Gentry, uh, here to use the opiate funds for hiring a pre-trial service coordinator. Mr. Gentry, good morning, how you doing?
Everybody, I'm doing okay. Where's Charlotte singing? Is your?
Anywhere, wherever.
Anywhere.
Judge, just where she wants to.
Well, you say everyone have a place to go, so, thank you all for adding me to the agenda today. I'm here to ask that money from the opiate, uh, settlement funds be set aside for a pre-trial service coordinator for the court. And so now, um, and Mr. Burke is here to speak to this as well, but now what happens is when someone is addicted to drugs and arrested for drug possession or some low-level offense like, um, trespass, they're held in jail, their Medicaid coverage expires, and then months later, we're trying to figure out what to do with them. We can't let them right back out, they'll go right back to drugs, they need to get some sort of drug treatment while on bail. But everybody's overworked, and we are relying on the treatment facilities to report back to us if that person leaves the facility before they're properly discharged. So what that means is that people fall through the cracks. Sometimes people are solicited as inmates at the jail who have been out of jail and off the books for years, their case has been closed, but because they never go back and, um, paperwork done, they sort of get lost in the system. So we've had people that left facilities months before that we didn't know about. Um, and so about two years ago, Dale Walters, who's here with us today, um, I'm not sure if you even know Dale, but he, um, sort of joined us out of nowhere and then came up with creative solutions for how we, um, handle people in our makeshift drug work that we have. And so for someone who hasn't been in treatment or recovery, thank God, um, I understand incentives, that people want to stay out of jail, um, but it's really difficult when you're fighting an addiction. And so Dale was here with us in our pre-trial conferences to, uh, give us a carrot in the stick, give us ideas for what type of treatment they need, and also what an appropriate punishment is for each individual that fails to follow that treatment plan. And so he has been a godsend. He's usually the first person that arrives in court and the last person to leave. He's employed by Forever Wellness right across the street that took over Prakata, but he stays well beyond his work hours. We rely on him to fill that gap of where are these people? Are they still at the treatment facility? How are they doing? How are they testing? And how do we get people into the facility? Because we were relying on the facility to screen, or the treatment facility to screen candidates at the jail, but it's, it's not that easy. There needs to be a go-between who helps those people reapply for Medicaid if necessary, and get them into the treatment facility that's best for them, understanding the different services offered, which ones offer behavioral health and substance abuse treatment, which ones allow sex offenders, registered sex offenders to attend. And so it's a maze to navigate. Um, my thought, and the thought of the Supreme Court as well, is that the opiate money is the perfect place to use funds that are given to the parish government to do this sort of work, to do, um, pre-trial services intervention. So let me explain how it benefits the parish. You guys know that we pay for every person who's in jail to feed them, to house them, to clothe them. And so the more people that are out of jail, non-violent offenders who need substance abuse treatment, the less people that are on the jail roster that need to be fed, that need to be housed, if we're screening them appropriately. Um, once they're in treatment, we reduce the risk of recidivism and danger to the community by making sure they stay there. That if they're supposed to be living in a sober living facility, they don't just move back to their house in Manny once they finish and think, nobody's going to pay attention to me, I'm one of, you know, a ton of people that are on the docket, nobody's going to check up. Um, Dale would be the person that checks up on them to make sure they're doing what they say they're going to do. I mean, this is plays out every day in court. We had somebody who was supposed to go to sober living, he realized that they're not there, he calls him and says, you need to go turn yourself into the jail if you're not going to go back to the facility. The person went back to the facility, and we're all good, the community is protected, they're not in jail, just waiting around, um, and what their insurance lasts. And so is, is approved under the, approved uses for the opiate funds. I did a sample, um, job description, do we take one, pass them around? And, um, yeah, I think it's a great use for the funds and a great benefit for the parish, a great benefit for us. Um, I have, it's truly a partnership as well. Um, I've spoken with Chief Deputy Brad Walker, who is on board, and thinks this is a good idea. They're going to put in their own mechanisms as well to test and verify out who was starting to gain in the system and who's actually interested in treatment. Um, I believe that the district attorney is on the same page, and thinks that we all benefit when we know where people are and that we ensure that, that they're doing what they say they're going to do when they get released on low bonds or some sort of special condition for bond. Um, I cited the, uh, approved uses in the opiate memorandum of understanding so that we can ensure that they're meeting all those purposes and we don't get in trouble. The role of the pre-trial services coordinator would also be to report back into, uh, uh, we have to report back to the opiate abatement task force on how we use the money to make sure that we continue to get that money every year. And so he would be responsible for that. Um, I'm asking that he be a parish employee because he would benefit the parish, his work would benefit the parish, and that he would pay fifty thousand dollars. He's a VA in accounting, he is, um, in the final process of becoming a certified licensed counselor.
Counselor in training.
Counselor in training, and he also is a peer specialist. And again, if you guys come to court and just watch him one day, he does the job of the probation officers, the bailiffs, the court staff. He's given urine screens, he's everywhere, and he is everything to all people, and he's become a cornerstone of the court, of the courtroom.
What, what's the cost per person?
For housing?
Yeah, just, just a rough.
Mr. Burke, I think it was thirty-six dollars at some point.
Bill or Ally could, they know what we pay the public jury. I mean, excuse me, the sheriff.
Present for day.
The cost, we didn't know what that is offhand.
I think it's thirty something dollars per day for a person. I think y'all get a bill.
That's way less than what I figured.
Just a proposal.
Judge, can I ask a question?
Fifty thousand?
Were you initially?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask a question? Can you call me about this, about before Christmas now? I know you're pending approval from the Supreme Court, a lot of drug court. But I was impressed then that funding it out of the opioid money would be a temporary thing until we got a.
Yes, so we talked about the follow-up on it, but the idea was, the more I thought about it, the more this is a thing that's absolutely necessary. So drug court is from this pre-trial court, um, and it is post-trial. So if you plead guilty, if you're found guilty and you're sentenced to drug court, there's money available to pay an employee to manage and track and report back to this pre-trial court. That's about for a maximum thirty equal. So we will get money for that, and once we get that funding, I'm suggesting that the drug court program reimburse the parish a third of the salary.
Yeah, well, here, here's one, I, I thought we were going to be temporarily doing this out of opioid money. And my concern is, so do y'all understand, there was a settlement between the federal, it was a lawsuit filed with Department of Justice dealing with opioid addiction and all against drug companies that contributed to it. And there was a settlement reached with several of these major drug manufacturers of billions of dollars. And in a way, it trickled down to states, the state of Louisiana set up a, a deal, and, um, they, it's paid out over eighteen years, okay? And we have received four payments, so. But in the next couple of years, I, I, I don't know why it's like this, I haven't scheduled the payments, but they're in different amounts per year. And so they, they will be below, like, the next two or three years, they drop to like thirty-eight thousand or something, but they're going to be less than fifty thousand at one point. And we have accum, we have money accumulated in there, but we haven't been spending it as much as comes in. My office is getting a little bit of that, um, not fifty thousand a year, I don't think. But, my, I mean, I'm just a little bit concerned that we, when we've got the money for this year, for sure. when we've got the money for this year, for sure, but at some point we could be over budgeting what we receive. The way this is handled is paid down to the parish government. So it's your decision on what to do with it, okay? There's a board set up in Baton Rouge that's actually held in Louisiana's French Association built. And our former executive, assistant executive director is head of the deal now. And they go over, there's guidelines and I certainly agree with the judge that the fund Mr. Walters, it fits things of approved, there's no question about that. But if, at the end of the day, the police jury, whoever comes and asks for some of the opiate money, then you have to approve it. And if you, if it reaches a point where it's the request for more than the revenue, then we'll have to make those decisions. And so the part that, I have two people that are receiving funding from that partially. Brad Walters, I mean, Brad Lamar is doing a bunch of pretrial diversion things and all that deal with drugs and he's getting a small portion of that for his salary reimbursement. And Jim Seaman, who went with me part-time, used to work for me January first, is handling drug court for our office. And he gets part of that. So that's my, my only concern is, you know, I mean, for this year, yeah, we're fine, and probably next year.
We also helped Dr. Holden them out.
See, that was a pretty small amount.
That was a small amount, but I mean, still.
Yeah, that took buy some materials and all about. So, but it's there to be used for these type of purposes. This purpose certainly fits. And let me say this, when I worked with Dale quite a bit since he's, and he was working for one of these agencies and we were pretty much utilized at this time, ninety-five percent of the time. They weren't real happy that he was supposed to be their employee. But he does a great job. I talk to him numerous times a week and it's a judge say he's in court from daylight to dark. He's, I think he's very knowledgeable and he's certainly worth what she proposes to pay him and how. So I just, you know, the question on whether he becomes a police jury employee is on, that's on Bill, that's what you should address. My people are not employees, the money just comes from my office and then I use it for salaries. There are some ramifications if somebody becomes a police jury employee and Bill might want to address that.
Well, one thing, I don't know what the salary is going to be, I already, the judge said how much? Fifty, well, you've got the medical insurance is going to be around twelve hundred a month. And you've got retirement is going to be twelve and a half percent of the salary. So it's not just the gross salary, we've got fringe benefits, workers comp. So we'd have to sit down and figure out exactly how much it's really going to be. And that's each year, that's recurring cost. Till the money runs out and then.
Those, that'll be significantly more than.
Yeah, I mean, just with the insurance you're talking sixty-four.
For, for a bookkeeping entry, I suppose that you would take, because the opioid is a separate account.
It's a separate fund.
And if it's a bill, it would have to, you know, transfer the money.
No, it's already in there, it's in a master bank.
Okay, but it would have to go into the payroll fund.
It'll go through the payroll system.
Pay, pay salary taxes.
That's right. And we'd have to take that out. So I mean, you could deplete the opioid fund pretty fast. Because I don't think, you know, if you're going to pay the salary, you need to pay the fringes out there too. It's a whole package, it's not.
How much, Neil, how much is in the fund at this time, about?
Two hundred.
How much? True.
About a thousand approximately. Let Mr. John just reiterate what he said, only four pages of receipts so far.
I know like, I think just next year maybe we'd get fifty-five or sixty, but then it drops to thirty-eight thousand for a couple of years in a row. But they gave us a schedule for the whole eighteen years this past. And again, I don't know why they're doing it like they're doing it. It doesn't make sense to me. I don't know why they just divide the total amount to eighteen and gives. It was bigger payments, then it drops down, it's just, it fluctuates. I'm sure there's a reason they did it that way, but I have no clue what it is.
Don, did I understand that if, if this is approved by the jury and the funds run out, then the jury has to pick that up?
Yeah, well, that's your, that's your decision, I don't want.
Nobody's suggesting that. So to go back up and clear a few things, I think the money that has been distributed was for drug court employees and we do not have a drug court because my office has four people that work there. I'm in court all day because none of us have experience in recovery or with the lingo, with the terms, with the letter. We send applications to the Supreme Court for a drug court program and we can't get funded because they say we have not adopted best practices. We do not know what best practices are because I'm a lawyer, I'm not a substance abuse counselor. So Dale would fill that function as well to know and understand the program manual that we need to get funding from the Supreme Court. And then that would be reimbursed by a third. But the money that's been put out so far is for a drug court attorney and we don't have a drug court. As far as employment, there would not be a contract if the money ran out, that's a risk that we're all taking. The goal would be that once we have a drug court program, we have money from the Supreme Court, we reimburse the jury a third of whatever the total amount is, fringe benefits, salary. And so now we've reduced the number by a third and we're talking in a few months hopefully to get our drug court off the ground. At that point, he would be a full-time employee, he could apply for federal funds that are available for this sort of work. He could apply for state funds that are available for this sort of work and also cost savings to the parish for every human that's not in a bed with medical expenses or other care and costs, we save the parish that money. And we get people the help they need, we put people back to work so that they're working and paying taxes. And everything works together if we're, if we're focusing on solutions, in my opinion, which is why they've given us the opiate money and set forth the ways that we can use it. The things that Dale is doing now are the things that are all set forth in the MOU, he's working with the community, with people, with their families, going above and beyond not just treatment, but making sure that the continuing of care is followed, that you go from residential inpatient to a sober living facility, that you continue to receive treatment, intensive treatment, and then you continue to step down until you have good repeat under you and you're sober and you can be better for your families. We have so many success stories in drug court that are mostly resulting from alters and for every person who's sober and working, that also benefits the parish and that we're all safer and they're paying taxes. So it's.
I agree with you, I agree with you.
Neil, are you comfortable that these funds can be used for this? Has, has that been established?
Yeah, I think there's no question that it can be. One thing I'd like to bring up, if funds run out and he's an employee of the police jury, if he files unemployment, we're going to have to pay unemployment on him, we carry ourselves, we're self-insured for however long that would be. And that would come out of general fund because we'd have to pay that whether we had money in the opioid fund or not.
I would like to, me personally, I would like to refer this to the finance committee and maybe give it to someone from your staff and DM and get more, and Mr. Don. And let's sit down and get some good hard numbers and look and see.
I'm a hundred percent part of this.
Oh, I am too.
I'm, I'm all part.
I want it to work.
I didn't realize till this morning, I was under the impression in previous conversations that once we got the drug court approved, it would take over and pay this.
We're talking about this.
It's just going to pay it because you're not, you're not updating on that.
We have, we, we talked.
No, we talked before Christmas and you said we needed this temporarily.
We're all pulling in the same direction.
But I'm, I'm all part, I just.
This is a surprise, like obviously I'm prepared to have it in the MOU if they need to want to review it. There are news articles that actually say the numbers are expected to go up, that the numbers for payouts have increased between last year and the coming year from fourteen million to sixty-four million dollars. And so I'm not sure where the data is coming from, but the, the reports that I've read are from the task force committee president or chairman and they expect the numbers to go up and that to.
That was in Baton Rouge? I haven't seen any of those. Although I just got the schedule of what they're going to pay out at this point.
If we, if we do this and it don't go through, I mean, he's just without a job now?
Well, I mean, we're okay for at least a couple of years. Okay, I'm not suggesting that, but we're okay for a couple of years, at least, maybe longer. It just depends long-term. If, if the judge is correct and the money increases, that's great. I, I haven't seen those reports, but I mean, I'm sorry to ask a question.
Who will be his supervisor? Will he work for Bill and the jury? Are you, or Don, or?
He doesn't work for me.
Best part of being a parish employee is that the court is prohibited from having ex parte communication or direct communication with people who are in front of the court, you know, held accountable for their actions or, you know, for bond set. He would make recommendations and then share those recommendations with everyone. So the public defender or the district defenders on board, they would make recommendations to the sheriff's department so that they can scream, say, this is a drug dealer, not a drug user. We don't need to send him to rehab, we need to keep him here, or this is a violent person who's a danger to our community. And so everybody would be, that information would be shared with everybody, including the DA's office, and usually everybody comes to an agreement. Because people know, oh yes, they have been here twenty-seven times, it is all for low level offenses. And the Ramas talked to me, you know, all these years about their drug addiction, they need help. And usually everybody agrees when we send someone to rehab. And so everybody's been communicated with, but having the person be a police jury employee using forms that are being dated by the court and then reporting to the court part-time and making sure that he's following all the rules of the pretrial services program would be the function of the court to oversee that. But the court doesn't have employees. We don't employ anyone, we don't have a group insurance plan. We're an entity that serves the parish and everybody who works for us are parish employees. Is it okay if Mr. Walters?
Yeah, sure, sure.
No, I just wanted to say that I think my biggest asset to all of this is that I come from a standpoint of somebody that wasn't an addict for thirty years, from the time I was eighteen to the time I was forty-eight. So failure after failure after failure in my own life, I come to learn what people need, you know, kind of be successful. Now, it's not successful all the time. But one of the big things is first and foremost is accountability, which in the past, there hasn't been any of that, like, like Judge Dupree said, because it was up to the individual facilities to report and then sober living homes to report and it just wasn't getting done. So when you know you're being held accountable, when you know you've got somebody watching over you, make sure you're going to your intensive outpatient meetings, to make sure you're going to your two AA meetings a week, to make sure where you say you are, that and foremost, in my mind, is something that really, really, really helps. That's one. And the second one is, the first thing that they see that they've never had before is truly someone that cares. Truly someone that wants them to be successful, truly for someone that wants them to be a productive member, to get a job, to be there for their family. You know, I destroyed my daughter's life for, for eighteen years, so I can come from that standpoint on and tell them, hey, this is what you need to do. This is how you do it. And all these things fall into place. And so taking that aspect into it and getting them on the pretrial, because like the judge said, right now, you go to jail, you're there for two months, a lot of time before you come to court and we can start this process. Well, insurance companies or insurance companies, they don't like to pay. So they say, well, you've, you've been, you haven't used in two months. You don't have, you don't have a drug problem. Well, they haven't used because they were being jailed. And if they got out today, they're going to reoffend. Whether it's, whether it's death, I mean, no matter what it is, I mean, the small crimes in our community that can be helped. And this is not a, like it used to be in past years where it's a twenty-eight day get out of jail free card and come back in. It's a proposal to each and every person that we see that it's probably at least a year-long commitment, that they do an inpatient facility, that they do intensive outpatient, which is another eight weeks, that they do individual, which is twelve weeks, follow that by staying in sober living, going to AA meetings, having the structure built around them to where if they do come back to this area, that they're productive and they've got a way to add to society rather than distraction. So that, that's just the, I think, some things that have been missed in the next, what we are. And as far as the other thing goes, I mean, if the money runs out next year and, and there's not money to fund me, I mean, I, I'm going to help people. So I'm going to go find a job helping people. I could probably go back to where I was today, but I just feel like this is a better opportunity to serve a community that, that I've become a part of in the, in the last five years and to, and to stop people from reoffending because at the end of the day, that's truly one thing I, I care about more than anything, is stopping, breaking that habit, breaking that curse. And a lot of time we're looking at families. I mean, I, I see people right now that I've helped that are already sober living. You got the dad is sober living, the aunt is sober living, the son is sober living, the daughter is sober living. But we're talking about generations here that have raised up and that's all they know. So at some point in time, we have to stop the cycle to, to benefit our parish. And I believe everything that I, that I am, that this is the way to do it and to benefit everybody sitting in this room, whether it's an aunt, uncle, daughter, whatever it is, someone in this room today will benefit from this, from this process.
Thank you, sir. I agree with you a hundred percent. We, where it's like any other parish, we do have a problem with it here. And like I said, you know, we, we, as a parish body, we want to do everything we can to help out with this, but we don't want to overload ourselves in here, so. Mr. Barry?
I'd just like to make a motion that we were sending this to the finance committee.
Refer it to the finance.
Yes, refer it to the finance committee, come back to us with some hard numbers. I hate to vote on something you really don't know what it costs and I'd kind of like to see that. And I think I totally support this. I think the judge is going to come through with the funds as we work through it. So I tend to support it, but I would like to see the numbers from the finance committee.
I second. Barry, second by Bo. All in favor of referring this to finance committee? All opposed? Alrighty.
Thank you, guys. It is maybe excuse to go back and not pull court. Thank you all.
Thank you, ma'am. Right, item seventeen is Mr. Stanley Cook, deputy coroner. Report on coroner's office activities during the period of October through December twenty twenty-four.
I'm Stanley this morning.
I thought you bought us a goodie bag. I thought it was snack.
No, this is some of that, that money we were just talking about that, um.
They're running out.
Oh, that wasn't broken. So that's how we utilize some of the funds, educational materials that will be sent out to the schools and other various organizations in the public to educate on on fentanyl epidemic we have in this country. So, so one pill can kill. We, we're getting that spearheaded. So we, we appreciate you guys helping us out with that. Hopefully it'll, you know, even touch a couple of lives with it and save a couple of lives. I think that money's been put to good use at that point. But anyway, October twenty twenty-four to December twenty twenty-four. Coroner's office, one hundred and fifty-nine investigations, we did six important death investigations. Sixty-eight OPCs, which considering it was the holiday season, that wasn't too terrible. And twenty-seven cremations for the year twenty twenty-four, we had six hundred and twenty-four calls that we responded to, whether that was death, OPC, or related cremation. We have fourteen pending investigations for twenty twenty-four. And that just means that we're waiting to get everything back from Dr. Trail and LSU as far as autopsies and toxicology as the phone. So that's how we shut the year down. Hopefully twenty twenty-five will be a little easier on all of us. I think this is one of the offices that we hope to not be as busy. And so we're, we're hoping and praying for a good twenty twenty-five.
And we hope you're right.
So I know last year was rough, but you know, once again, we appreciate the support you guys gave us and we can't thank you enough. We couldn't do it without your support.
So have y'all, if on these, if.
So have y'all, if on these, this program here, y'all being in, just going into schools this year with it?
Going into the schools this week, we've been started meetings with the principals. I think we have another big meeting Friday with some more of the schools where we can kind of get on a schedule and hopefully, you know, get in our plan is get in every school in the parish, of course. And then.
What, what age level are you working on? Mostly doctors? It gonna be the whole school?
It's gonna be the whole, whole school. Of course, I think it'll have more of an impression on your middle school and up, which I think that's probably the, the critical age, you know. Get it when they're going into adolescence and things go crazy up here at baseline. You don't want to throw that in. So that, that's kind of how we're doing spirit.
So will it, will it be tied in with your DARE program or it be a separate program itself?
It's my understanding that it's separate.
Okay, separate.
There is a sheriff's office.
Yeah, there is through the sheriff's office.
But I was just thinking of you doing your DARE program at some time you could put in with this during the same time their, their minds are on that. You know what I'm saying? But anyway, I'm just, I'm just getting gathering information. That's all.
That's about all I have, gentlemen. Y'all have any questions?
Any questions? No, sir. That's it.
Thank you, Doc.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Give up the good word.
All right, item eighteen is to adopt a twenty twenty-four amended budget. Secretary of Treasury presented to police jury proposed twenty twenty-four amended budget. The changes have been reviewed and the police jurors who are familiar with the, with them. So.
I make a motion we adopt the twenty-four amended.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
This is saying we're, we got revenues coming in seventeen million and expenditures of twenty-four. How are we approving the budget?
We had fund balances from prior years. We had carryforwards. We had a lot of large expenditures this year that are not recurring. We're going to have, be in the same situation next year on twenty-five. We're going to expend more than we take in. Some of that's funded by transfers from the landfill. We're moving money as the landfill is progressing, we're able to move money into a lot of road districts, which are governmental funds, which is what, this is strictly a governmental fund budget. The landfill is proprietary fund. It does not have to have a budget. We do one for him, but it's not included in this. That's, that's, that's how we do it.
So that's your fault was covered, is what I, that's my concern.
We're not going to have any red.
So if it wasn't for the landfill, we would be in a bind?
No, not yet. What I'm saying is we're not going to get in a bind if the landfill progresses the way we expected to. It's going to generate enough funds where we can start moving money into the road districts and we can improve our roads and spend more money than we take in from Avroon Tax. And there'll be transfer.
And if the landfill doesn't make any more money, we're back up in some of them, so we don't get in the way.
Which over the past three years.
The tax for the landfill was to provide the operation and maintenance of the landfill and, and then the road, whatever is left go to the road. So we can, we can take, that's what we would. We did that last month, didn't we?
Yes.
Yeah, we took some money from landfill and sent to the road.
That's what I was going to touch on in the past couple of years, I know, from.
Where we got three hundred and fifty thousand.
Right.
Yeah, three, two.
And we're very fortunate because the landfill is producing and appears and it's going to continue to do. We're doing well with the landfill. Hopefully we'll continue on with this, this new project that we opened and that's going, that's going to really help us a lot. Be able to give more money to the roads.
Right. And hopefully our roads, as far as our hard surface, I'm going to say oil sand that we have been doing in the previous year, that cost is probably going to be cut. I'm going to estimate somewhere at half. So you, you're, you know, each road district be able to get more miles for the money now since the material is going to be a lot cheaper. That's our goal.
That's what we're going to do. That's not a goal.
That's not.
We're just going to make that happen.
See, that's one of the things, the PUG mill was the expensive piece of equipment. That's part of what causes deficit. It's not a recurring expenditure, Mr. Stevens, but that's why it's up. But it was cut. We had fund balance and sales.
I wanted to make sure they understood.
Oh, okay, okay.
It cost to set up shop. All right, any other discussions or questions on, on this item? All right, do I have a, did we have a motion? Got a motion by Ruffin. Second by Bruce. All in favor? All opposed? That motion carries. All right, item nineteen, the secretary of treasury presented to police jury proposed twenty twenty-five budget. The budget has been reviewed and the police jurors who are familiar with it. You got to read all this?
No.
I was going to let you do that. Yeah, each one of our jurors have sit down and review their budgets for twenty twenty-five. So do y'all have any questions or comments about our twenty twenty-five budget? Bill, you have any input on our?
What I'd like to say is what y'all have in front of you is a rough draft we work from. What I'll be doing is I'll be convincing this into a booklet and put it in real nice format for y'all to take home and have with you a copy, so y'all can review it at any time. Would like to both, my horn and my staff horn, we have the budget figures ready to post against our general ledger now. We've never been able to do it this early in the past. We can start doing, looking at budget actual figures this month. And you can see exactly how much you're spending in each line item, how much is left available. We can control how much we spend. We can look and see whenever we're getting close to being in the red. The road office has the ability to pull up that information whenever they're looking at PO. Before they make an expenditure, they can verify that they have the funds available before they enter into a contract to purchase something. So everything's really going good. I like the new system.
Yes.
And that's about all I'd like to say.
Okay.
I'll make a motion. We approve the twenty twenty-five budget as offered.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Bison. Second by Eric. All in favor? All opposed? All right, item twenty. Huh? Yeah. Item twenty is to approve authorized check signatures. Be resolved that the following individuals are hereby authorized to sign checks issued by the police jury. Mr. Weatherford, secretary treasurer, Ally Vines, assistant secretary treasurer, myself, William Ruffin, and Ronnie Bison. Have any questions on this or concerns? Do I have a motion on that?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Eric, second by Ramitas. All in favor? All opposed? All right, item twenty-one, we're going to review and award contract for twenty twenty-five roadside vegetation herbicide application program. During the December eighteen twenty twenty-four regular meeting, the road shop committee recommended the police jury not award a bid for twenty twenty-five roadside vegetation herbicide application until a public hearing could be held with the low bidder. The public hearing was held December twenty-third twenty twenty-four at nine AM. After the public hearing, the road shop committee reviewed the following bids and recommend that Manco Vegetation Management, Inc. be awarded the contract. Do we have any?
Okay, this was.
So how did it turn out?
Manco was not the, the low bidder.
Yeah, they were, yeah.
Okay, we with, with them?
Yeah, but they, they, they end up making, the road shop end up making a recommendation to go ahead and go with them. It was a, I, I didn't, I had an appointment that day with Mr. Hughes. He was here at the meeting.
What was?
I think they, they, we got a good understanding of our needs now, where we.
They, they were the low bidder. We, we just had a discussion about quality of service, what we expect. We, we just had a real open conversation and I think we're asking for y'all to award low bidder.
I'd like to add one thing.
Yes, sir.
One, one of the weaknesses whenever this discussion came up is that we didn't notify, notify of a problem in a timely manner. So in the future, we've got to be sure that when we have an issue, we notify the parties promptly and have on record.
When, while I'm on this, Mr. Hughes, when they come and spray in, in a district, they notify the road foreman or yourself of the time that they come, right? And so when they go into that district, do they do all the roads in that district?
No, I was going to say that before. So everybody understands that we only budget a little bit of money in every, in every road district, you know, some none.
Right.
So with, with that money, we can determine how many miles we get, and it's minimal. So we, the foreman determines what roads that we, that we spray. We, we spray major roads, roads that we have trouble with. Not everyone is spraying. So we have a list of roads that are sprayed. If anybody cares to look at it and have some info, welcome.
I guess what my question is, so when they come into, say, my district in, in six up there and they spread, they do all six at one, say, in one week, of how long it takes, they do that area, that whole ward. So we'll have a date for future, we'll have a date, say they came May the first and sprayed. So, so we'll know to be looking, you know, in the following months if it's worked.
Yeah, and, and in the report we get afterward is, is a report that shows every day, this day, these roads are done.
Okay.
Same time, actually same time of, of every application.
Well, I, okay, that, that sounds good. Oh, yeah. I need a date. But anyway.
Do we use it? Do we use it in our district?
You ain't, you ain't got nothing to spray.
Maybe the garbage dump.
They did, like, Paul told me where they sprayed last year. So they did do some, right?
All right, do I have a motion to award Manco Vegetation Management, Inc.? Got a motion by Bird. Second by Bison. All in favor? All opposed? That motion carries. All right, a parish transportation act certificate. Bill, we, uh. What is this here?
This is a certificate to the legislative auditor that we complied with all the requirements of the parish transportation act. It's part of our audit procedures.
Okay.
And it's done annually.
Okay.
Nothing.
All right.
Do we don't need to take any action on that?
Yeah, I need a motion and a second, but if we have any questions about this item.
I want to put five roads on it.
No, I just want to make your minds first.
So if we can act like that, then we might as well. I make.
Got a motion by Bison and a second by Bo. All in favor? All opposed? You have to get Mr. Hughes on that list, see if you up top.
I don't have. He moved me right up there to top.
He did. See there? All right, introduce the ordinance to establish a fifteen mile per hour speed limit on Bill E. Barbe Road, Ward Five, Road District fifteen. The Sevigny Parish Police Jury desires to adopt a fifteen mile per hour speed limits on Bill E. Barbe Road. The first step in this process is introducing an ordinance for this purpose. Secretary of Treasury Bill Weatherford, then read, and the proposed ordinance allowed.
Whereas Sevigny Parish Police Jury is responsible for the safety of individuals traveling on parish roads and whereas the current proposed speed limit for Bill E. Barbe Road located in Road District fifteen Ward Five allows drivers to travel at speeds of up to forty-five miles per hour without being issued a citation. And whereas the Sevigny Parish Police Jury has determined that, that this is a dangerous speed for travel on Bill E. Barbe Road and Road District fifteen Ward Five. Now therefore, bill ordained that the maximum speed limit for any vehicle traveling on Bill E. Barbe Road and Road District fifteen Ward Five should be fifteen miles per hour. We have further ordained that this ordinance will be in effect March one, twenty twenty-five, and it should be published one time in the official journal of the parish of Sevigny, state Louisiana, along with any other minutes of the year.
Like it. I'll make that motion.
My second.
We need a motion. You're just introducing it.
This is just introduction.
Okay. We'll vote on it when and mark, I mean, next meeting. All right.
Will there be signs put up?
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, there had to be.
Got to be posted signs.
It's just a lot of houses on it.
Yes, sir.
It was a rough road. They got a new blacktop.
No, now they Cadillac.
That's the speed bumps. All right. Item twenty-four is consider approval contract with SCS Field Services to provide operation and maintenance service for the Sevigny Parish landfill.
That's who has the contract now? This is the same?
No, it's different.
This?
Uh, the company we were doing business with, they were doing the testing for us at the landfill. Their employee that is the expert for that resigned and they were left without any professional to do that work. And so they withdrew. This is a company that Gage is going to be using whenever they start production. And we talked with John Franklin and he suggested we use this, this group. They're a little more expensive than another group, but this is the one Gage wants to use. And Gage is supposed to start picking up these expenses, which I'll, we'll be talking with them next week. We'll make sure that we, we remind them of their obligation.
So what is this explore?
It's, uh, testing the fumes that come up from the ground.
How much? Says a monthly monitoring up to twenty-seven landfill gas extraction wells, inspection and testing of seven pumps and one blower flare station and quarterly surface emission margin of approximately a hundred and seventy acres. The total annual cost of this service is a hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred dollars.
Right.
Which Gage.
Is going to pick up.
Ten thousand a month.
Ten thousand a month.
When are they going to pick it up?
They're going, whenever we remind them, which is going to be next week.
Next week.
What was the prior cost?
Nine thousand six, I think.
Well, they, the way they did it, Tetra Check was the company that offered the proposal to Bruce back in February. And it was for a five-month period period. So I think we paid him like a lump sum of fifty or forty thousand and then they picked it up the remainder of the year. So when it was all said and done, it was eighty-five thousand. I do want to note today, too, on this hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred, that's proposed for the annual year. That includes, I think, four rechecks on the emissions and one dollar to figure for them coming out. So it could actually come in a little bit less than that, because all that's required is one monthly check to be in compliance and then one quarterly check. So that's just the cause of the basic minute.
Well, you feel pretty sure Mr. Weatherford, with your conversation with Gage, that they, they will pick.
They, that's what Norman said he would do, and so far Norman fits right there.
And that, and which this is his company that he recommended, right?
That's the one they're going to use. Because when they start, when they take over production, they'll be the ones handling the testing, not us.
Any other questions, discussion on this item?
I make a motion. We approve the contract with SCS Field Services.
Got a motion by Bison, second by who? Bird. All in favor? All opposed? All opposed? Motion carries. Item twenty-five, authorized payment approved bills. Got a motion by Bison, second by Ruffin. All in favor? All opposed? He just give that thing, you know, that one.
I make a motion, we transfer it, sir. We're going to transfer it.
Got a motion by Ruffin, and a second by Bo. Appropriate transfer sales tax fund for January operations of five hundred thousand. All in favor? Uh, all opposed? Motion carries. Committee reports.
Fifty thousand a month.
Any committee reports?
Repairs and maintenance and all those prices have gone up. We got more equipment than we've ever had.
Any committee report?
Any committee reports? You got any tax, I was going to ask you about our tax commission.
Um, December was up, over two hundred thousand dollars. I did see that report, so yes. Looks like the sales taxes coming back. It had been local. So hopefully this year will be, and I guess it has to be all the pipeline activity we have going on right now, which is a lot.
It's a bunch, yeah.
I don't think we, we had anything in road and shop, or we hadn't had our landfill yet. That's next week, so we'll have a report in for next month.
The, uh, I didn't want to say about the, uh, Economic Development Committee that's out there and, you know, just approved, given money to form a Tipton Group, which is now online, I think, and I think they're still working out with Bill. But anyway, you're going to see a lot of activity with that coming up. Uh, some, uh, community meetings and that type of stuff to get some input from, from the communities on what they'd like to see.
We have a, uh, C E A to sign.
We got a draft C E A, sent it to, uh, Mayor, uh, Hable, and I sent you a copy. I'll be sure to give you a copy today. Anybody that wants a copy, I, I'll print them out and we'll look at the draft.
I don't know about y'all, but I'm about ready for broadband people to get out of here.
Amen.
Bobby, are they shut down?
Down at the moment, from what I'm saying.
Shut down?
Oh, we're, we're at a meeting tomorrow, ten thirty.
They're here. They are not shut down though.
No, they're, they're.
As far as I, as far as I have found, they're only working on state highways.
Yeah. They're on state highway, they said.
They're on no parish roads. I'm not saying they're not set up.
Well, I guess we can't really about me on the state highways, but it's the water, the water lines that keep cutting.
Right.
And every time they cut a line, then you gotta put a oil order on when you put it back together.
One line on the day was fifty-eight hundred dollars to repair.
Bobby, what is, what is, how do you get refunded if they cut your line and you repair it? And the reason being, you know, when my brother's trailer is past the man, they cut, he is, they put some kind of just snap together, quick fix on it. That four years to blow it off water going everywhere. So he hired a plumber to come fix it right, splice it back together like it's supposed to be.
On his side of the later, or the?
Uh, I can't answer that, Randy.
If he hired a plumber, they'd be on his side.
That's what I'm thinking, and I would assume he wouldn't, he'd have called the water company if it was on the other side of the meter.
Walter Mansell, you found where they were, they've been using plumbing stuff to fix the water lines.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, they.
Well, he, the guy that come out there said whatever they had put on there was just Mickey Mouse, and he said it's probably just a water pressure surge that blew it apart.
But that's a concern if they're on a water line and cut it, and they run in and refix it themselves and don't let somebody know about it, and you've got contaminated water in the system.
Yep. And that's, uh, that's the problem we having at E. Barbe Water.
On the best side of that later, they shouldn't have been there.
Right, they've been on private, and, and I don't know if it was in a text or conversation with one of the guys from there. I told him, you know, not only, uh, was they getting into, uh, lines in our right away, but I had multiple reports of them being on private property.
Where I got the call.
When they get on private property, that's a different, you know, it's a different situation there. But, uh, hopefully, is it tomorrow at ten thirty? Hopefully tomorrow, we can resolve a lot of this, get a better understanding. I know we have some, uh, individuals from different water districts. Uh, Mr. Don will be sitting with us. And, you know, we'll come to, uh, hopefully we can get it worked out, because you know, you know, we want to broadband here, no doubt, we want it here. But still, yeah, you know, we got to, uh, uh, take care of our citizens here.
South Lea has already spent over thirty-five thousand.
See that?
Yeah, see, and they don't have that in their purse.
They hit, they hit in the south end, they're fixing it in the north, they're fixing it in the east, they bar.
But hopefully we can get a grip on this before, you know, uh, I still say that we should have had to sit down even before. So. Give it. And, and, and we talked about.
Now with my question still, do you have, is there any remedy for them to pay up landowners' back if they tear stuff up?
They both. They're not supposed to tear private property, first off, Ryan.
Well, my district, I had one arrested, and that was on his property, but they arrested him. Oh, it's been. On that situation, the one?
That one down in?
In the car industry?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, hopefully tomorrow, we can get a lot of our questions answered, and Bruce brought up about the bond, that's still on the table, we're going to talk to him about some type of bond.
For my part, I seen them, I, I don't know, Cedar Grove, Holly Grove, whichever one of them roads it is, they were up on the back slope. You know, I haven't seen them do anything out there, it was either way. But I also rode after Bobby told me that they were shut down too, and after talking to Walker. Because they were, they were starting on Petty Road, and between the Petty Road and the right away, obviously, there's no room for nothing else. I mean, there's something in there, it, it's just no room.
They could get on the other side.
Yeah.
A lot of places, they could get, get on the, you know, for all the water lines and all of, get on the other side of the road.
Well, you know, one of, one of the responses.
I had a little bit of this conversation. You're fine. I know it's not supposed to come up here. My name's Mike Pitt, I'm on the South Lea, uh, Water Board. Since we've encouraged you guys moving into our area, like Barry said, the thirty-five thousand dollars is just on the clamp for repair main water line.
Yeah.
Has nothing to do with overtime, the other extra heating, the gas, the fuel, everything going wrong with that. The biggest problem, well, the biggest question we have is what kind of permitting process do you guys come in? Will they just warn you to come in and do this? And yes, we want broadband. Second of all is the way this A one on low pay, they call you in forty-eight hours, you're supposed to have it done. So what do you guys are doing when we're coming in? We got like seventeen miles of locates to do on a Friday afternoon. Okay, we don't have the bin, we don't have the equipment to do that, and then they have seventeen crews head out to every single road. Pairing stuff up left, right, and sideways, the guys are working through the, the rain, the, they're halfway sick from being in these waters. The holes fixing and repairing. The guys that are doing the jobs, I know this, that they get paid by foot, they get a bonus, that they get more than so much a day, more than so much in a week. So the third party guys that has these boring machines work, they, they gather at the front of my house nine o'clock at night, you know. So our guys are having to do this, there's no shutdown, some of these guys working twenty-four hours a day. Um, and, and there's a push to those guys, I mean, if I was running the machine, I didn't, I wasn't able to handle preparing up the water line, but Don says you gotta get all orders and all this stuff, all this. Our biggest question from South Lea, which we have a board meeting another night, we discussed this, we need some kind of process in place where they can't just do a locate for seventeen miles of locate and send seventeen crew up in the six feet of coverage for forty-eight hours.
On Friday evening.
Yeah, well, yeah. We can't do it, and that's going to come up tomorrow, I just.
It was brought up in the meeting that we had, and they were supposed to be permitted, they were supposed to be bonded, and those guys, they assured that was going to happen, but evidently it didn't. So, so we have tried it, and now.
We will.
It's shut down now supposedly, and parish roads until tomorrow, after tomorrow's meeting, and then whatever comes out of that.
But they called in locate, I'm someone up my area, I got it yesterday morning, so. Well, where do you have to be legal?
Yes.
What, what, it said the same thing when Walter called me last week, I ended up calling, helping Ali do whatever. He did what, what Mike said, they, they come in there, all of a sudden, they want all these miles of locates done, and all the people to do that.
Right.
It, it's, it's impossible, I can't, I can't do that.
No, it's about me, and me and one more, and he quit Monday, so.
It's me. Gave you too many locates.
Well, I, I, I kind of, well, I was speaking to Mark, but the thing is, yes, we all want, we all want the service in here, that will be wonderful when we get it. We're having this cold and freezing and everything else, and then when we get contaminated water in water lines, that's public safety. And, and these people, there are criminal statutes about contaminating water supply, and I don't, I'm assuming y'all, I, y'all, y'all won't come fixing.
Know what they parent do, no, we, it's not, if ain't the license, license is bad, they don't.
They don't need to be trying to fix it.
No.
They fix it and don't let the water system know or something, like I said, and you get contaminated water in the water system, and nobody will slap.
Right.
Not counting, uh, uh, damage to the roads.
Yeah, we, we, I mean, that's a huge issue, but the other is a public health issue.
And we can't be the only parish having the same issue.
They hitting them all over the state. The, the suppliers is having a hard time getting the parts to fix them. You see, that's where we're at, we're, we, we made, like, the last one we ordered just clamps, thirty-five grand, didn't put the big water lines together. I'll give you nine max, or? We ordered stuff, that's not the big, and now we're short supply, and here's, here's my biggest concern. I, I take care of a lot of women, women down there at the church, we got twenty-degree weather coming next week, what do you do when the water gets broke, shuts down? That's just adds to all that factor, you know, and we'll leave the water running, keep it breathing. They got no water. Perfect storm, so.
Right.
And there's a lot of people down in my area, they take this water guy that's working for us, so it's really frustrating.
Well, we're frustrated with them too. Mike, I mean, they, they beat us up, and Bobby and I rode several times and looked at stuff that they were doing and tearing up, and it, it's just, they, they, it's just like, hey, we're here, we're going to do it, we're federal.
That's what they tell you too.
When you got seventeen different crews up there, half of them big engines, the other half don't. I'm probably big, maybe they communicate. And some of them, the guys that I talked to, I ride around the neighborhood, I was up on the church the other day, trying to help them take, take care of the yard, you know? And, and some of them are really good, and some of them, well, you tell them, and I talked to some of the other guys who are, these boring machines, they get, they want to get below the water line, okay? For a couple of reasons, they get right below the water line, that dirt been dug up over the years, they can, they can make that footage per day. And on the other side of the road, you got, like, in front of my house, right about eighteen, ten, we're on fiber on the other side. South Lea come in last year, we run a main water line on my side of the road. Where they boring, my side of the road going into the ten-inch main water line, and, and they get in there, this is what the guys that run, if they get in below that water line, they can, they can bore quick, because somebody under started a hole. And so what happens, they get in them water lines, I talked to Tony down at Templeton here, he said, they'll get in the water and just run right down, just pull out, do whatever, and then leave. You gotta go in and fix all that damage, and then they tear up a lot of stuff trying to, not with the boring machine, going in, you know, the digging ditch, so they have a target to bore to, and not be located, get a guy to try and locate, well, they cut it with the, the machine digging it out. And, and the guys doing the job, I mean, if they're not having trouble, what do they have to lose? Get their footage per day, get the, get the time rolling.
Like I said, I hope, I hope, uh, we resolve all this tomorrow, or, or the biggest part of have a good understanding with them. I agree with all y'all, I've heard complaints, and they ain't even made it to my neck of the woods yet.
They fixing.
But, you know.
At the same point, as the water department, if we have some kind of permitting process that will allow us time to get all this stuff located, we'll do it. We order different locators, we're working out twenty-four hours a day, we want the whole thing, to try to get ahead of them. But when they, you can't.
Yeah, it ain't possible. It ain't possible.
And in two days, they can come out and start the seventeen different groups.
But anyway, we'll, we'll, uh, we'll have a, just a meeting with them tomorrow and hopefully we can get. But you know, the, the guys that I spoke with, they really don't know what's going on on the ground, they just hearing, you know, they, they don't even know where it's at down there. But they, they hearing, oh, well, everything's running good, well, they don't know all the details that's going on down there, you know, and to them, you know, they, the employees are telling, well, we running smooth, well, you're not running smooth, you're getting jacked up fifteen places down there. You know, so those are the guys, like Bobby talked with, those are the guy that's going to be here. The ones that, like Bobby said, the ones that got the checkbook.
And, well, that, that was the point, because most of the guys doing it, like Mike said, you can't even communicate with them.
Right.
All they know is they going from A to B, and then the uppers, the guys that come to this meeting, know where to be found.
There's no, there's no inspectors out there, no engineers. No, the, the bucks.
No super.
One of the hits I had, I had it marked, and they still hit it. We fixed it, and I told them, they had it, I, that we had it dug up, I said, go on, run your duck while we got it, uh, a whole load. Hit it five again.
And like you said, Bobby, uh, Bobby and, uh, what road foremen we have, they can't, they can't keep up with all of it either, but they got jobs to do themselves. So, anyway, hopefully we'll come to some intervention tomorrow.
I'm gonna try to be, if I, if I.
He ain't fixing water lines.
All right. Moving on, let's move on to item twenty-eight, guys, operations, we have anything in operations? We don't commit, we got hung in committing.
I, I only have one thing to tell you, I got a call last night from a, from a land man for a new pipeline that's been coming through, he's going to a meeting Friday, he's going to bring in and do show up the route. Talk about roads, what roads, parish roads, just what we do beginning of, of any new pipeline.
What size?
What size?
Anything yet, we talked about ten minutes on the phone, he'll be here Friday morning at ten thirty.
If it's Pelicans, thirty-six inch line, if you don't run over here east of town beside this momentum line and down through.
Where's this at? It's Pelican, talking about Wednesday meeting?
Friday, ten thirty.
At your, at your office.
Make motion with John.
I got a motion by Bo. Second. Ramitas. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you, guys. Y'all hunker down for that snow next week.